Good evening, everyone. And thank you for tuning in to the 2022 Hamilton County School Board Debates. My name is Carrie Randolph and I'm the Executive Director of Chattanooga 2.0. In 2015, Chattanooga 2.0 started as a movement to transform education and workforce development outcomes from birth to career. We have since grown to a community-wide network of organizations collaborating across sectors, working to ensure that children in Hamilton County have access to quality education and career opportunities to help them realize their full potential. I'd like to thank our partners, the Chattanooga Times-Represse and Local 3 News for co-hosting these critically important debates alongside us. I'd also like to thank our District 10 candidates Jeff Krimm, Chrissy Essex, and Fay Robinson for participating in this important conversation this evening and for their interest in serving on behalf of students, families, and teachers on the Hamilton County School Board. Our candidates answered some candidate profile questions and an educational equity questionnaire ahead of tonight's debate. If you'd like to read their full responses, visit chat2.cha-tt-the-number-two.org/vote. Chattanooga 2.0 was born out of a recognition that strong educational outcomes, birth through career, are essential to our community's economic growth and progress, and they require community-wide commitment and action. We believe that strong leadership at all levels of the educational system is necessary to our success as a community, and we recognize just how important these races are during today's challenging times and into the future. Thank you again for joining us. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to serve our community in such a vital way. And without any further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce David Carroll of Local 3 News and Allison Schirck of the Chattanooga Times-Represse, who will be moderating this evening's debate. David and Allison?
Thank you very much, Carrie. And candidates, we want to thank you for being here. We want to thank everybody for watching this evening. So we have a lot to take care of, including the rules of the debate. This is something all of our candidates will be interested in, and hopefully our viewers as well. Both candidates will leave their cameras and microphones on during the entire debate. Each candidate will be given two minutes to make an opening statement. Allison and I, Allison and I will alternate asking eight questions during the debate. Some of the questions you'll hear are directly from residents and shareholders of folks who live in District 10. At the end of the evening, each candidate will be able to pose a question of their choosing to either a single opponent or both of their opponents. That's up to each individual candidate when they ask their personal question. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question, and there's an optional 30-second rebuttal if we, the moderators, feel it's appropriate to do so. Now, when your time is up, candidates, hopefully you'll hear a little whistle or some sort of sound effect, or there may be someone actually saying something verbally, but when your time is up, you will hear a notice about that. Time, your time begins when you begin speaking. And once time has expired at the end of an answer, the moderator can choose to allow a candidate to complete a sentence if you happen to be in the middle of one, but you should not be starting a new thought after your time expires. Allison?
Each candidate will be given two minutes to make a closing statement. Moderators may ask candidates to clarify a statement or explain an acronym when needed. Candidates may not use the internet, cellphone, or any other outside assistance to answer questions during debate. And the goal of the debate tonight is to introduce the candidates of District 10 and their platforms. There is no winner or loser. Candidates will conduct themselves in a respectful manner and not use derogatory language. And we will start with opening statements in alphabetical order and then alternate who answers first. Candidates, do you have any questions for us before we start?
No.
All right. Jeff Krimm, you are up first. You have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Okay. My name is Jeff Krimm. I'm a Lutheran minister here in Chattanooga. And I'm very nearly a lifelong resident of District 10. I live in the same neighborhood that I grew up in. For 10 years, I've served our community as pastor of Ascension Lutheran Church and as a chaplain for one of our local hospital systems. I've served on the board of various nonprofits here in Chattanooga, including being a council vice president or a past council vice president for the Chattanooga Chamber of Commerce. But most importantly, I am a product of Hamilton County Public Schools. I'm a 1993 graduate of Udoa High School. I'm the wife of, or excuse me, I'm the husband of a public school teacher, and I'm the son of a retired public school teacher. I'm also the father of a Hamilton County Public Schools student. I have been deeply invested in public education in this county since my family moved here in 1982. I'm also a product of our special education system. I'm an adult with autism. I have gone on to earn multiple college degrees. I've held teaching appointments at Ball State University in Indiana and Chattanooga State right here in Chattanooga. I wouldn't have been able to achieve any of this without the solid education I received in Hamilton County Public Schools. And I want to make sure that all students have access to an education like that moving forward in the future.
Thank you very much. That's Jeff Krimm. Chrissy Essex, your turn to make a two-minute opening statement.
Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Christine Essex. I am a resident of Hamilton County, Tennessee. I have three teenage daughters. Two of them have already graduated from high school. My other teenage daughter will be a sophomore this year. I'm a paralegal at a local law firm here in Hamilton County. I have a criminal justice degree. I have worked in insurance as a customer service insurance agent. And I also worked for about 10 years managing money, employees, and stuff like that. I have also been involved in special education as I have a daughter who is an IEP, Special Education. She's having to have a special tutor to help her through. We are not actually in a Hamilton County school this year. We're actually homeschooling this year. And I am actually a Christian conservative Republican, and I had to run as an independent because when I picked my Republican paperwork up at the election commission, I was called by the Hamilton County GOP that I could not run as a Republican due to certain bylaws and rules of the GOP that just came out last year. So that's why I'm running as an independent. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy Essex. Fay Robinson, you have two minutes to make an opening statement.
Hi. Thank you so much for the opportunity, as well as for the opportunity to let the voters become familiar with the candidates. My husband, Tom, and I have lived most of our adult life in Hamilton County, with the last 12 years being in Udoa. I am, we both attended public schools. I received my bachelor's degree from the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga. I am a retired insurance agent, formerly owner of Robinson Thompson Insurance Agency. I know what it's like to operate a business, meet payroll, and have employees. For the last four years, I have been a mentor with Tennessee Achieves, which helps navigate high school students to higher education. I'm also a volunteer at Memorial Hospital in Chattanooga. And I look forward to serving on the board and working with others to provide the students and the teachers with the resources, facilities, and skills for positive outcomes for all while maintaining standards and accountability.
All right. Thank you all for your opening statements. Our first question is related to something that's new in school board races this year, and that's the partisan nature of school board races. And Chrissy Essex, this will go you first, followed by Fay Robinson, then Jeff Krimm. This year's school board elections come with the major change. We have the addition of two new districts, including District 10, covering College Dale, Udoa, and Snow Hill areas. The second change, of course, is that the school board races are now partisan for the first time. So our question to you, if elected, will the fact that seats are now partisan change how you approach the role you will serve as school board representative? Chrissy?
No, it will not affect the change. I am a Republican, and how I believe is how I feel bringing into the school board.
All right. Fay Robinson?
I'm a conservative, but I will vote according to my constituents and just being equitable.
And Jeff Krimm?
Absolutely not. I was planning on running for school board years before that change happened. My sole purpose is to ensure that there is quality public education in Hamilton County. I would actually like to see the legislature change school board elections back to nonpartisan races.
All right. Allison?
Thank you all. Fay, the second question is to you first. Do you think addressing the growing deferred maintenance and facilities challenges across the district to ensure all schools' facilities are safe and healthy learning spaces should be a priority? Yes or no? If yes, how do you plan to accomplish this goal? If no, why not?
The question was like facilities?
Yes.
Well, when I met with Dr. Robertson and asked what his needs were, that was his top priority. You just have to evaluate the greatest need for the safety of the children and put your resources there for the close down of deteriorating school and build another one or consolidate a school. But you have to, you cannot allow students or teachers to walk in a school that is unsafe.
Okay. Jeff, it is your turn to answer.
Okay. Yes, I think that is, that along with dealing with the teacher attrition is those are the top two priorities that I have as a potential school board member. As someone who has served on the board of nonprofits before, I'm used to figuring out how to allocate scarce resources and often scarce resources that are raised by somebody else. And I plan to bring those skills to prioritizing. I mean, we're going to have to listen to building engineers and those sorts of people, but then the school board is going to have to prioritize putting financial and human resources into deferred maintenance and getting our physical plant back up to stuff. I do think one of our former superintendents was on to something when he suggested that we look at the value of the real estate that we have and maybe that some of our properties are valuable to other people, and we could build new schools with money from the proceeds of the system.
All right. Chrissy, it is your turn to answer. You have one minute.
Yes, I believe children need a safe place to go to school. So my two top priorities is the safety of the children. To make sure that these schools are safe, if you have buildings that are falling apart or need maintenance, we either need to fix the problems out of the $456 million budget, or I've noticed there's a lot of empty buildings throughout Hamilton County. So why not, you know, put some of the schools that are falling apart and maybe into those buildings?
Right. And I assume there are no rebuttals from anyone after these first two questions. Looks like everyone's okay so far. We'll move along. And I assume that if we don't make that call, but you feel that you need to make a rebuttal, wave, make yourself heard. Now, this question comes from a Hamilton County resident. Should parents who do not have degrees in education be mandating what all kids in schools are learning? For example, demanding that certain books be banned? Jeff Krimm, you go first.
You know, we require teachers to go to a lot of school to become professional educators. And while I would be the first to say that parents should have a voice in education, I do think more often than not, we need to back off and let the teachers be the, and the librarians and the administrators be the professional educators, librarians, and administrators that we have demanded that they go to school to become.
All right, Chrissy?
I, as a parent, I believe that these books should not be in our schools. I think it's a parent's right to decide whether or not these books are in the school and if the teacher should be teaching them or not, or the librarians, I don't think they should be in there. And parents have rights to, you know, address these issues.
I believe we have our first true disagreement of the evening. How about you, Fay?
I certainly believe parents have a voice in what their children see in the library. Movies are rated for age-appropriate. Why wouldn't books be rated age-appropriate?
All right, Allison?
Okay, our next question-
Excuse me, I have a rebuttal.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Chrissy said these books several times. I'd like to know specifically by title what books she's referring to.
I don't have titles of books, but I did, I was at the school board meeting in February when a gentleman spoke in Saudi Dacey and quoted examples from the different books, and it was horrific from what I heard. I personally do not know the names of the books. Now, I've seen books. I'm not for sure the names of the books.
But I guess to sum it up, obviously, you, Chrissy, feel that parents, or as the question was phrased, you know, people who do not have a degree in education necessarily, but are parents, you feel that these folks should have a say in determining what books are used in schools?
Parents should have a say.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, Allison, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, candidates. Our next question tonight is on the topic of future-ready institutes, and it comes from a student, Alicia, who's a student here in District. And I will share my screen.
Hello, my name is Alicia Said, and I'm representing Udoa High School. So my question is regarding future-ready institutes. Hamilton County School Systems has approximately 28 future-ready institutes across 13 different high schools in the area. And these programs are intended to teach specific career-based learning to prepare students for their targeted career path. So my question is, what are three ways you plan on promoting these institutes and making them more accessible for students across the county in order to maximize the number of students we have well-equipped for their future? Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Alicia. Chrissy, this question goes to you first.
Repeat the question one more time.
I can play the video one more time for everyone.
Hello, my name is Alicia Said, and I'm representing Udoa High School. So my question is regarding future-ready institutes. Hamilton County School Systems has approximately 28 future-ready institutes across 13 different high schools in the area. And these programs are intended to teach specific career-based learning to prepare students for their targeted career path. So my question is, what are three ways you plan on promoting these institutes and making them more accessible for students across the county in order to maximize the number of students we have well-equipped for their future? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm not familiar with the future-ready. I do, I think that all students across Hamilton County should have access to that if they want to go to college, if they don't want to go to college. But I believe that future-ready, from my understanding, is helping children decide what, you know, what field they may want to go into. So I'm not real familiar with the future-ready program.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Fay next.
I recently attended a meeting on this, and I'm just amazed that a high school student literally almost have a large part of their nursing degree by that or an aviation license. I think it's wonderful, and I think it's up to us as adults to make sure that students know what is available, find out where the interest is, and make sure that every student is available, that that teaching and learning is available for them.
Okay, and Jeff, we have one minute.
I think the future-ready institutes are great. I've interacted with future-ready institute students at the hospital where I work, and they're very engaged. They're wonderful, but I think the two biggest problems that we have with promoting them is lack of awareness, which you've already seen here tonight with one of the other candidates not really even knowing that they exist. I think we need to better equip and better encourage our middle school guidance counselors to talk about the future-ready institutes as students are making their high school choices. The other thing I think we need to make sure that we have is the availability of transportation for students for whom the future-ready institute they may want to go to is not at their zone school. I don't know exactly what the answer to that transportation issue is, but it is one of the big things that we need to look at for better access to future-ready.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff and candidates. Now we will move to the topic of school funding. Do you believe that increased operational funding is needed for the school system to adequately support the academic, social, and emotional needs of students? Yes or no? If yes, what would be your plan to accomplish this goal? If no, why not? And Fay, you will answer first this time.
My first thought is no, because I understand that Tennessee has reevaluated the formula for schools, Tennessee investment. And I think, I certainly want to see how that will play out because that will, like, for instance, a child might have one need. Another child could have five or more needs. And that would allow resources to go as needed.
Okay. Jeff, it's not your turn?
Excuse me. With 64% of the budget going to education, think about that for a minute. For every $1,000 I pay in property tax, $640 goes to education. So I would have to see why we do not have enough money without voting for more money.
Okay. Thank you, Fay. Sorry for cutting you off there. And Jeff, the question goes to you next.
Yeah. So the old plan that we used for years, the BEP, both people who loved it and people who hated it, admitted that it was one of the most complicated plans in the country. The new plan, TESA, has been passed very quickly. Even legislators who pushed for its passage admitted that they haven't read it. We don't know what funding under TESA is going to look like. And the school board itself does not tax. Like, we are not the funding body. We have to look to the legislature and to the county commission for that. Currently, we raise funds by property tax and by, primarily by property tax and by sales tax. And both of those are regressive taxes that unfairly penalize people who are at the bottom of the economy. I would not advocate for an increase in either of those funding sources. Like I said, I think one of our previous superintendents was on to something when he said we needed to look at the equity that we had locked in some property. That's a place where we could find some operating money on a short-term basis. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Chrissy?
No, I agree with Fay. I don't think we need to raise it anymore. I just think that we need to find the money, you know, and offer different programs, whether or not a child wants to, you know, use the resources for, you know, radiation or, you know.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all. Let's move on to a topic that's a hot one, school bullying. It can take many forms, including verbal, physical, relational, cyberbullying. What steps would you take as a school board member to reduce or prevent bullying in your district? Jeff Krimm?
Bullying largely, I mean, nobody wakes up and says, I want to become a bully today. Bullying happens because students' pain and trauma is coming out sideways, and they take it out on their peers. One of the things that's been vilified in the media in recent months and years has been the concept of social and emotional learning. But why would we eliminate from our curriculum something that teaches students how to deal with feelings, how to deal with trauma, how to deal with pain, and make bullying go up? I mean, I think that's step one. Step two is to have more counselors available in the school system. And then, of course, step three, after those things don't work, is to look at disciplinary procedures and to not ignore and to say, oh, kids will be kids, and to employ appropriate discipline where it's necessary.
All right, Chrissy, the question for you is, what steps would you take as a school board member to reduce or prevent bullying in your district?
Well, this hits home for me is that I have had a child that was bullied and assaulted in the school system. I have been working with Superintendent Dr. Robertson, and my daughter and I actually filed a petition with the school board to change policies and procedures on how bullying is being handled. I think there needs to be punishment. I believe that the bullies need to be held accountable for their actions. I'm here in the restorative justice, and we actually were involved with the restorative justice, and that did not work in our situation. So I just feel that bullies and even parents need to be held accountable for the children's action. My child suffered emotional and mental stress from what she went through, and it does cause stress, academic, mental, and emotional for these children. So I plan to, that is my number one priority on the school, if I get elected on school board.
Thank you, Chrissy. Fay Robinson, do you have the solution for bullying in your district?
I certainly wish I did, but it isn't an easy solution. I do think we need to look at what the bullying person is going through. But why can't we, I will want to really emphasize to the principals, the teachers, the parents, perhaps send something home to the parents. This is a procedure the school will take if this occurs. And I recall a niece submitting a mind saying, you know, it's the parents that are punished when the kids have to go to school on Saturdays. So maybe if everybody had some skin in the game, that they could really have a good talk with their children and say, it's unacceptable. But from what I hear, there's a lot of homes without parents, the grandmothers, there's guardians. And I just, and how do you get in?
Our, our sound effect is quite loud this evening, so everyone's hearing it. That's good. Thank you all for your responses. Does anyone want to rebut anything? I guess not. Allison, go ahead.
All right. Our next question comes from a teacher in your district, and it's about a topic they know very well, teacher retention. Across the nation, we are in the midst of a massive wave of teacher resignations. If elected, what will you push for to ensure teacher retention? This is the important part, other than simply raising salaries. Chrissy, you are up first.
Well, with the bullying issues, I've had multiple teachers in Hamilton County reach out to me and address their concerns. And I think the reason that a lot of teachers are resigning, I actually am friends with a few teachers that have resigned, and it's not really the pay that they're concerned about, it's the behavior of the children. When children are fighting at school and the teacher's hands are tied, they can't do anything, and they can't get administration to help them break the fights up. They're spending a lot of their class time trying to break fights up. So, yeah, we need to make sure that we are, you know, the administration is backing the teachers up and helping them, you know, with this situation.
Okay, thank you. Fay, you're up next. How do you think we ensure teacher retention?
Based on what I heard a school board say last night, that he interviewed teen teachers who were retiring, and their biggest reason for retiring wasn't money, it was the discipline in the schools. So I think there's, I think we really need to have a big, let the teachers know, hey, we have your back. We talk about bullying, and we think of students being bullied. Teachers are being bullied. So the behavior problem is serious. And so we have to improve that, in my opinion, to retain the teachers.
Okay. Thank you. And Jeff?
Teachers are leaving, and keep in mind, as the spouse of a teacher, most of my, most of the people in my social circle are teachers or other school professionals. Teachers are leaving because people in the community and in the school system are no longer respecting them as professionals. The very first thing that we need to do as school board members is to respect that teachers are highly trained professionals. This last year, due to a poorly-run online- year, due to a poorly-run online election, teachers law in Hamilton County lost a chance to engage in collaborative conferencing, which is what replaced collective bargaining that they lost several years ago. The very first thing that I would push the school board to do is to voluntarily come back to the table and invite the teachers to the collaborative conferencing, even though we're not required to during this cycle. I would love to see that teachers given that kind of ownership of their work environment once again. Um, thank you.
All right, thank you, candidates.
Any rebuttal from anyone? All right. We're running a little ahead of schedule, so I'm going to use my moderator's privilege here to throw in sort of a last-minute question, and it's sort of a breaking news question. I noticed on Twitter today that school board chairman Tucker McClendon has said that tomorrow, at the school board meeting, they will be addressing a possible resolution related to the recent controversy in which one of Governor Bill Lee's advisors, Mr. Arn, had made a comment during a meeting that was videotaped, and Mr. Arn made some rather controversial comments, saying that teachers come from the dumbest parts of dumbest colleges. And later in his talk, he was referring to people with, who have education degrees, get them because they're easy and you don't have to know anything. And a lot of the controversy has erupted because, in some people's opinions, Governor Lee has not said or done enough to rebut those statements or to stand up for teachers. So apparently, at tomorrow's school board meeting, that topic will come up. At least one school board in Tennessee has passed a resolution complaining to Governor Lee about a lack of response on this. So, Jeff, let me start with you. If you're a school board member today, this week, what would you like to say to Governor Lee if you saw him face to face?
I'd like to tell Governor Lee that several of our state institutions are nationally known for our education training program. So does that make some of our schools the dumbest colleges? I'd like to tell Governor Lee that as a Tennessean, I am ashamed that he sat in the same room as someone who made statements like that and didn't rebut them. As a graduate of the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga, which has a nationally-known school of education, I am personally offended that he hasn't spoken out about that, and I really hope the school board does pass a resolution taking him to account for that.
Chrissy Essex, what would you tell Governor Lee about this controversy from recent days?
You know, it saddens me to know that he hasn't said anything. Our teachers are feeling a lot of pressure right now, as I have talked to multiple, and they don't feel like that they're being appreciated, you know, and stuff like that. And so we need to be backing the teachers and making them feel like they are somebody, because a lot of them right now just don't feel, you know, they feel like the, you know, they're not important to administration. So Governor Lee, you know, I would be, I'm highly upset that he's not said anything or rebutted.
So even though you identify as a Republican, although you're running as an independent for reasons you stated earlier, you would criticize Governor Lee on this topic?
I would.
All right. Fay Robinson, you're running as a Republican. What would you say to Governor Lee?
Well, first of all, I'm appalled of the statement, and I would ask Governor Lee why he is taking so long to be against the statement, to, to not stand up for the teachers. Well, I mean, his wife is a former teacher. I don't think she would be happy that he would not speak out for the teachers. And I do, and I, and I agree with Jeff wholeheartedly. Teachers are very well-trained. Most of them have masters. So many of them that I know have master's and doctor's degree. We do need to recognize the importance of their education for what they are doing, because education, our children are our resources. And I just cannot believe that somebody would make this statement, nor a governor of Tennessee would not stand with the teachers.
And Allison, let me give you the opportunity, if you'd like to do so, if you wanted to add any question tonight.
Oh, I am okay.
All right, very good. Now, this is the part of the debate that sets it apart from some of the others, in that although we have solicited to ask you some questions from the community and from our own news sources, we want to give you the opportunity to pose one question to your opponents. And Jeff, I'll again start with you on this one, since I went out of line there a little bit earlier. But you may ask a question to one or both of your opponents, that's up to each of you, and each opponent will have one minute to respond to any question posed to them. So Jeff will let you lead off.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Fay Robinson, you, if, if you haven't been formally endorsed by the local chapter of Moms for Liberty, they at least have been sharing your candidate materials on their social media presence quite regularly. One of their stated goals is to channel as many students out of public schools as possible. I wonder if you share that goal with them?
No, I do not. I, I think everybody should give public schools opportunity, and the parents should have a choice on whether, whether or not they want to homeschool.
All right. Next up is Christine's turn to ask a question to either Fay or Jeff or both.
I just have a question for Fay. I just want to know what motivated you to want to run for school board?
I was asked and encouraged, and when I, what really made me decide was the low grading level and math level by the third grade. And I said, I cannot believe that. I will, I will give up my time. I will designate my time to help improve education, because I think education is the equalizer to our society. With, if, with the quality education and motivation, Hamilton County children can compete globally.
All right, and Fay, if you have, we were asking you, please ask a question to either Jeff, Chrissy, or both.
Well, I'll ask the same question to both of them. What motivated them to run?
And Jeff, you want to go first?
You know, like I said, I've been involved in public education my entire life. Some of my earliest memories are of helping my mother set up her classroom. When I was a state park ranger, I helped school resource officers bring boy scouts to our parks. As a mature adult now in my 40s, school board simply makes a lot of sense as the next way for me to serve public education in our community. And given that I'm now living in the same district as the high school that I graduated from, it takes on a whole new level of meaning.
And Chrissy?
Well, what motivated me to run is, I've had girls in the Hamilton County school, their whole entire, you know, school. And what motivated me to run was back in 2019, when I started seeing curriculum coming through my daughter's, you know, backpack and stuff, and, you know, it started making me wonder what's going on. And then, with the bullying issues that are now happening, you know, I was motivated to run because I want to make changes in the school system. You know, I want to help these poor children that are victims of bullying and, and other, you know, being assaulted and stuff. And so my motivation is to help these children and to help them feel safe in our schools.
All right. Any rebuttals from anyone? Okay. Thank you, candidates. That brings an end to our question for tonight's debate. Now we will conclude with closing statements from each candidate. Jeff, please give us your closing statement first. You have two minutes.
Once again, I'm Jeff Krim. I am a lifelong advocate for strong public education, particularly here in Hamilton County. Serving on the school board would be a wonderful way for me to give back to the school system that gave me so much, that launched me into higher education, that launched me into a first career and a second career. I just really would welcome the opportunity to make sure that my son and all the generations that come after him have an access to that same high-quality groundwork in Hamilton County public schools to launch them into bright futures that I had. And if you're interested, you can find me online at www.jeffkrim.com.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Chrissy, what next?
I just want to say that if I get elected, I do want to make some changes, you know, within the school system. My priority is the bullying issue, whereas when my daughter told her story at the board meeting and we, you know, we presented our petition in changing policies and procedures on how bullying is being handled. So that's one of my top priorities is to make sure that parents all over Hamilton County have the resources, and I actually have a hotline that parents can call me on. And I do want to, you know, also, parents have a right to know what their children are being taught in school. So I just think parents have a right to say what their children are being taught in school, and thank you.
All right, thank you, Chrissy. And Fay?
Adults, it's our responsibility to set up a child, to help the children become successful adults, either workforce or higher education. Education is to teach, not indoctrinate. To, they need to be taught how to think, not what to think. And I would just be very proud to serve on the board and make children have a better life through education.
All right, thank you all. We appreciate hearing from you, and we thank you for putting yourselves out there. From the looks of the ballot this year, in all the races, there were not a lot of candidates for school board, which is kind of disappointing to me. I wish more people were interested in, in running and serving. So personally, on behalf of all of us involved in this, we appreciate you making yourselves available for a very important office, and we wish you all the best. Harry Randolph, Executive Director of Chattanooga 2.0, has some closing comments.
Thanks, David, and I'll echo that sentiment that you just shared. Thank you, candidates, for participating, and again, for your interest in serving in, as David said, this really important leadership role for our community. Thank you to our moderators and to our co-hosts, Local 3 News and Chattanooga Times Free Press. Thank you to Alicia Said, the student from Udoa High, and the community members who submitted questions for this debate. And last but not least, thank you to you, our viewers. If you missed the first part of tonight's debate for District 10, the video recording will be available later this evening on Local 3 News YouTube channel and at timesfreepress.com. Tomorrow night, we'll be right back here at 7:00 PM for the District 11 School Board Debate between Joel Black and Steve McKinney. Don't forget that early voting starts this Friday, July 15th, and ends July 30th. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is July 28th. I encourage you to head over to CHAT2, that's C-H-A-T-T, the number 2.org/vote, where you will find more information about the candidates, the upcoming election on August 4th, and how to request your absentee ballot. In closing, 2022 has been another trying year for our community. Strong leadership on the Hamilton County School Board is needed now more than ever, as we continue to make Hamilton County Schools the best school district in the state of Tennessee. And so I thank you for your engagement on this critical topic. Have a good evening and stay safe out there.